Yeah.
Yeah.
It was interesting kind of watching the view change by the time I got here. It's much, it's getting much closer to being, yeah. Some of the trees are kind of fully changed over. It's only really just kind of starting to happen.
Yeah.
So we're not expecting either Heidi or Ted.
A lot.
Are we expecting either Heidi or Ted?
Uh, I think Ted is at the other meeting and probably Heidi is too.
Advance, right?
I think he means, well, you can't get to four.
Yep. And when we go up there.
This is true.
It'll be like even peak or.
Back to you.
Right.
Must be able to come there.
Potentially getting, getting owned by almost to get a big store with a knock down.
What's that?
Yeah, right.
We have a problem with only one voting member here.
You can watch those zones to see whether we have to go all that far. Yeah, yeah, it's strange and see what happens.
Two were elevated to voting members the last time.
Yeah, so previously in this meeting, whenever the chair had to elevate an alternate to a voting member, it wasn't something that was done by motion and voting and just something that the chair did in the conference to make sure that there were differences.
So should we do the same again?
Good question.
You're gonna have to elevate some of these members because otherwise you don't have a call.
Okay, hang on.
Exactly, but first you have to call the meeting to order before you do anything. Do you want to be on? Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't trained. I know how to watch them, but I don't know how to turn, I know how to make sure they're still on.
Might be time to hit the go button, I think.
It's bingo.
Oh, it has. We're on the, we're on the watch, really?
Yeah.
They're already watching this get up.
I'm sure.
Times to come up there and, right?
Are we ready?
We are ready.
We are ready, okay.
Six oh one.
Six oh one P M on the twenty fourth of September two thousand twenty five, and this is the new planning board meeting. Both of, I'm the chairman, or acting as chairman, and I'm John Gorch, and to my right and my left are alternate members, and they need to be elevated to become voting members for this meeting. And, let's see. The way we did it the last time.
Last time you actually made a motion, but it sounds like.
Go ahead.
Well, I can't make a motion.
No, what's your thoughts?
Well, it sounds like, but Becky is saying we don't need to do that, you just need to sort of proclaim it.
I can just proclaim it? I can just proclaim it?
Yeah, in the past, it was just.
Okay, I am, I am, I am proclaiming that Meredith Harthrum and Rob Cates are hereby elevated to the position of voting members for tonight's meeting. How's that sound? Meredith is quiet.
Yes.
Rob is smiling. Okay. Number two, minutes of the prior meeting, that is September third, two thousand twenty five.
For the record, you should still take attendance, just so it's on the recorder that these guys are absent.
Thoughts, my dear?
Becky's asking that you just state that Heidi and Ted are absent from the meeting.
Okay. Um, at this present time, uh, the chairman, Ted Baker, and our new member, Heidi, um,
Marotta.
Heidi's last name escapes me right now.
Marotta.
Uh, are absent from the meeting. How does that sound? Hang on. There we go. Heidi Marotta.
But with both Meredith and Rob elevated as voting members, you have a quorum.
Okay, and Rob and Meredith are now elevated to be voting members and may now have a quorum for this meeting. And now goes the minutes of the prior meeting. Why am I stumbling so much tonight?
Wednesday evening at this time.
Thoughts, Meredith?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Wednesday, September third, um, minutes as written.
One thing I do remember from the last meeting that didn't say in the minutes, but maybe we actually never actually officially did it, was to confirm that the application we're talking about was deemed complete due to.
Um, no, that was not, there was no motion made to discuss.
I thought we didn't have, I thought we didn't have to.
If you look at your agenda, because this is a denovo review, you're starting from scratch, so do you see the highlighted?
Okay, well, I'm having, yes, if I do, I'm having a little trouble because we had a lawyer here last time, and he said we didn't need to.
Oh, where is that cheat sheet?
With my understanding, I mean, I wasn't here, I'm just going by the recording, so.
I thought we did discuss it, I thought it wasn't.
Well.
It says none of the previous applications is in play for this review, so.
Yeah, but I thought we actually discussed that it was actually.
Well, according to this sheet, we skipped out over it.
We probably talked about it.
And we talked about it, for some reason we skipped over it because we said.
We don't need to.
Yeah, we didn't need to, but we really do need to.
I might be able to clarify to the extent, I mean, I'm happy to let you talk about it, but I, my, my memory of it is that when the planning boards, and I'm David Goldman, I'm attorney for the applicant here, um, my memory of it is that there was a discussion about it, the planning board's lawyer, Gregory Braun, who was, was here, and I, I think that it's a denovo review, that means you can, you're not bound by anything that happened before, but this is not an entire, I think the discussion was to the effect, this is not entirely a new application, this is a revised version of the original application, and so it had already been deemed complete, which is how we got to the decision that then had appealed to the, you know, to the board appeals and it's sent back here, so that's my memory of it, that you don't need to vote to say it's complete and get to that, you can kind of get into the substantive consideration of it, um, without those procedural, uh, steps, but that said, that, that almost maybe just, um, if you want to take a vote to say it's complete, that's, that's fine too, it's, it's purely up to you, it's just not mandatory to return all the way to the beginning and say, is this complete, is it, it's already been complete the first time around.
Well. On our meeting agenda.
Yeah, so it does say on page three of five, um, about midway through, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight paragraphs, David Goldman stated that this application was complete, but although there have been amendments and modifications, it is generally in line with the original plan, therefore to extend that it appears that the project is substantially the same, even with the amendments, the board could still find the application to be complete and just move on with performance standards in progress, so.
Nice to know, but it's consistent with myself.
When I said no, right?
Yeah, so it is in these minutes, it's not a motion, so it's not hype, it's not dark, only, only motions get moved, um, it's just discussion, so.
But that other point was we didn't need to make a motion because.
No, 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 but, but I'm saying is you don't need to make a motion, but it's in the minutes.
Right, well, that's why I'm trying to reconcile, like, two different things here.
Yeah, so I don't know, maybe this is.
Are you?
Is Joel coming?
Clear.
Well, I'm clear what happened, I'm not clear what to do next, because.
Let's, well, I.
I mean, we can approve the minutes, let me second Meredith's motion, and we approve the minutes as written.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded, that we approved the minutes of the September third, two thousand twenty five meeting. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay. Um, let's see. Next, correspondence received, uh, we have a letter dated November ninth from our third party here, Goral, Goral and Palmer, and it basically says that everything, yeah, was provided by Maynor on the second of September is fine or is no further comments. How's that sound? Okay, and there's also correspondence here from our CEO, Rick Dutton, and correspondence from Rick Dutton to our CEO concerning this project, and should we read it out now, or is it good enough to say that it was done?
I can read it if you want.
Okay, the first section is this, from our CEO to Rick Dutton. Good afternoon, Rick, I'm David, and here is reading S one dot one, you sent overly convinced of the skiway and timberline roads, there is still a part of easements shown on the plan, I thought these, those easements were gone as a new deeds. Looking at C two dot one, there's private sections of parking lot three access driveway and a skiway road asphalt area show that his plan, is that area renewed the density calculations? I realize that it's Mr. Marotta's land, but the roads are Sunday River's, it's Sunday River's responsibility. How does the needed parking spaces for new residential, new peak and timberline T H L L C play into density? If these parking spaces are not below units, can the area, can the land area be used for figure intensity? I ask these questions, I will ask these questions at the meeting and wanted to give you a heads up. In response, Mr. Dutton goes, hi Joel, sorry for the delay of getting back to you on this. S one dot one is the existing condition survey done at the start of the project. At the time, these easements were in place, we think it's important to keep those original conditions memorialized on the existing condition plan. Obviously, since then, the building has been demolished and there has been some minor reworking of gravel within the excavated building area, et cetera. Regarding density calculations, S one point two shows the easements that are still in place and therefore are not developable land to be included in the density calculation. So in short, yes, parking lot three access and a small portion of the skiway road haven't accounted. The parking spaces, we've used restricted to timberland T H, are part of the condominium plan and part of the project. They just happen to be restricted in use in the same way that individual driveways are also restricted in use. In the case of the drive, in the case of driveways, they are restricted to use by the corresponding unit owner. I appreciate the heads up and thorough review. As for above, I do not think that these items need to be issues for the board to get hung up on. Thanks, Rick Dutton.
Can, can I ask a question? Um, so in the subject line, when Joel emailed you, um, she did reference the application number, but when you replied, the application number was referenced, but you referenced it as two four dash two eight nine?
Mm-hmm.
And the number is actually two five dash two eight six? So it's really confusing.
Apologies, that's our internal mainland number for the job, and we have a company protocol of adding that, that number to all of our.
Can you, in the future, sort of mark that it's mainland number or something?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, because when I'm adding it to the planning of facts and stuff, it's very confusing because it's, it's so close to our application.
Yeah, yeah, I can understand that, and if there's a two four two eight nine somewhere out there in the past, then that would be a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can put a, a mainland or parentheses or something like that around there.
Just put an M L or something like that.
Yeah.
We don't have a two four two eight nine.
For the last year.
For the last year.
Right.
And we were not up to two eight nine yet. Um, correspondence is done. Okay, four, old business, denovo review of Timberland T H L L C, the village of Timberline Site Plan and Subdivision Application, twenty five, two eight six, presented by Rick Dutton, Mainland Development, eleven dwelling units. Anything to say, Mr. Dutton?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the record, since I think it was the first time I've officially been speaking, Rick Dutton for, with Mainland Development Consultants representing the applicant, Timberline T H L L C. Uh, I feel like I, I probably ought not have much to say, because I, I think we're in a position where, uh, we had a smill to you folks, and then we had kind of a flurry of last minute revisions prior to the previous meeting, uh, based on comments from Goral Palmer and comments from the CEO. Those had been addressed, uh, to the previous meeting, but, but, uh, you folks, the board hadn't had a chance to, to, uh, fully review those, and since then, I think any new information at, at play are, are the correspondence that you read in, so, um, I, I don't have anything else to add of, and I think we would hope that the process would go something like, uh, discussion of, uh, of any, uh, performance standards and, and questions, any remaining questions that board members may have, and then hopefully, uh, a shift into review of, a formal review of the performance standards and the findings of fact, that would be ideal for us, kind of keeping it in, in, or in keeping with your, your process essentially, see if we can march, march down that road. I've already probably said more than I needed to. Thank you.
Okay. Um. Becky, if we deem this application complete and vote on each section being complete, at that point, there are no further changes that preved in the, in the application.
That's my understanding.
What?
That's my understanding.
That's my understanding too. So should we do that?
Like minor changes, because when you find it complete, you're basically saying that they have submitted, um, all information required to review the application, um, but you haven't actually reviewed it to make sure it actually meets the standard in the U D R A, so sometimes things need to be adjusted with minor adjustments.
Okay, so our cheat sheet here says, is the application complete with motions and votes for each section? I want to say we ought to do that, yes, no?
Think if we want to cover all our bases, sure, last time I think we decided we did not need to do that, but if we need to, that's fine.
Thoughts, Rick?
Rob.
Talking to me?
Yeah.
I'm Rob.
Yeah, Rob, sorry. I forgot to write the first letter. Sorry, Rob.
Okay, I mean, I think we're all prepared, so I'll make a motion that section ten point one of the application, twenty five, two eight six is complete.
Second.
It's been proposed and has been seconded, that section ten point one of application number twenty five, two eight six is complete. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that section ten point two for the application twenty five, two eight six is complete.
Second.
It's been proposed and seconded, that section ten point two of application twenty five, two eight six is complete. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Three.
Three, okay, good.
I'll make a motion that section ten point three of application twenty five, two eight six is complete.
Second.
There's been a motion that section ten point three of application twenty five, two eight six is complete, it's also been seconded. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
I'll make a motion that section ten point four, and thus the full application is complete.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that section ten point four of application twenty five, two eight six is complete. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Okay.
There's a motion that just says application, um, would be above, you know, application number twenty five.
Yes, I'll make a motion that application twenty five dash two eight six is found fully complete on September twenty four.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, application ten point nine, twenty five, two eight six is complete in all sections.
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay, good. Um.
All right.
Review performance standards, it says. Okay, let's see. Performance standards is page twenty one?
I think you have form thirteen point one, which is sort of a cheat sheet guide maybe for that.
Yeah, because we need to go step by step.
Yeah.
Sixty five, understood, okay.
Before we get started, does anyone notice anything that's of concern for performance standards?
Well. We should perhaps go through these, just as a.
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get it all, if we got an issue.
I don't, I don't have an issue, I don't think. Let's start out with A. A, conform with the comprehensive plan. All proposed developments regulated by disordinants shall be in conformity with the comprehensive plan and policy statements of the town, with the provisions of all pertinent local ordinances and regulations, and state and federal laws and regulations. This project is located in Resort District, as described in the comprehensive plan, and meets the density standards. Um.
Yeah, I can make a motion, so I'll make a motion that there's a finding of fact that the, this is a residential subdivision in the Resort Development District, and so it conforms with the comprehensive plans, and thus complies with section A of the performance standards.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that A, the performance of the comprehensive plan has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Good. Municipal services. Proposed development shall not have unreasonable adverse impact on municipal services, including municipal road systems, car department, police department, solid waste program, schools, recreational programs and facilities, and other municipal services and facilities. When the planning board finds, based on a recommendation of the select board and other departments, and the results of any municipal impact analysis, this includes future tax payments that will support municipal services, that municipal services do not have the capacity to provide services to the, to the proposed development, the planning board will require one or more of the following.
Yeah, I think we should probably avoid reading them all, because it's sixty pages of U D R A. You have, you just, you know.
I propose that B, municipal services, has been met by looking at a letter headed Town Capital and Operating Expenses Statement in section ten point four.
Sure. A little more comprehensive one, but sure.
Would you like to find section ten point four, Darren?
No, I'm great.
Okay. Did I make that as a motion? Well, I don't make that as a motion. I make a motion that B, municipal services, has been met under the auspices of a letter headed Town Capital and Operating Expenses Statement in section ten point four of the of a letter headed Town Capital and Operating Expenses Statement in Section 10.4 of the application. Would you like me to read that letter?
I don't think so, it's in the plan.
Okay.
Now, I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that B, municipal services, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, C. Preservation and enhancement of landscape. The landscape shall be preserved in its natural status insofar as practical by minimizing tree removal, disturbance of soil, retaining existing vegetation during destruction. After construction is completed, landscaping shall be implemented that will define, soften, or screen the appearance of off-street parking areas, buildings, and other structures from public right-of-way, and of public properties in order to enhance fiscal design of the proposed development to minimize encroachment of proposed uses on neighboring land uses. This site was, and will be, a highly developed site. It has been for a long time. Landscaping will be used to enhance the site. That's the best I can say. Thoughts? Okay, Baron, why the smile?
No, I was just thinking maybe we need to put a little more detail in the motion for the finding of fact.
Yeah, I mean, I can make a motion, basically, a commotion finding of fact. As per the plans, while almost the whole lot will be involved in construction, plans include trees and other screens to shield development as well as preserving existing tree line at the back of law, and thus.
And don't forget the fence.
In fences, and thus complies with Section C.
I'll second that.
Make that as a motion.
I do.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded that C, preservation and enhancement of the landscape, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, let's see. D, relation of proposed buildings to the environment. Proposed structures shall have a minimum adverse effect on the environmental and aesthetic qualities of the developed and neighboring areas. Special attention shall be paid to the bulk, location, and type of buildings and such natural features as sloped soil bank and drainage ways. Non-residential structures, the planning board shall consider the following criteria. Well, seeing this is a residential structure, I don't think we need to read the next eleven items. My best take on this is that the buildings are similar to nearby structures, and the building height is thirty-one feet.
I'll make a motion that in terms of relation to buildings to environment, finding of fact is that proposed plans are thirty-one-foot tall buildings, residential buildings, and thus, there is no concern with the relation of proposed buildings to the environment, and thus complies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, yeah. Relation of proposed buildings to the environment has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. E, land not suitable for building. The following areas shall not be built on, excluding road and, title, road and driveway construction. Land which is situated below the normal high water tail, high water, high water mark of any water body, there we go. Land which is located within the hundred-foot, hundred-year flood plain. Land which is part of a permanent road right-of-way or permanent road easement. Land that has been created by filling or draining a pond or wetland that has not received approval with such filling and draining by the Army Corps of Engineers and Maine D E P. Land that has been identified as significant wildlife habitat by Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, when a mitigation plan has not been approved by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. Well, what I have written down here is way off the mark. Thoughts?
I will make a motion for a finding of fact, or Section E, that there's no land below a high watermark of any water body, water bodies, no land in flood plain, no permanent road easements, no drained wetlands, no significant wildlife habitat that's identified by the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and thus, Section E complies.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that land not suitable for building has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Topsoil and vegetation removal. Topsoil should be considered part of development and shall not be removed from the site except for surplus topsoil in roads, parking areas, building excavations, otherwise indicated on the approved plan. Two, significant residual vegetation shall be left intact to prevent soil erosion following forest practices, landscaping, and cutting of trees to provide access to direct sunlight. The planning board shall require a developer to take measures to correct, to prevent soil erosion on the proposed development. Three, prevent soil erosion of shoreline areas as defined timber harvesting and clearing, home removal of vegetation for developers shall provide a mitigation set point in the shoreline zone ordinance. My proposal is that for at topsoil and vegetation removal, one and two are, 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 are good stuff. I just love the right word, but things that should be considered. And three, this project is not one of the shoreline zone, and so is to be ignored.
I'll make a motion, finding a fact for Section F, that per the plan, topsoil is not to be removed as part of the development plan. The plan includes erosion control plans for the erosion issues included in the proposal. And that because it is also not a shoreline zone, Section F is complies.
Second.
What was that?
Second.
Second, okay, I didn't hear that, but I thought that's what that was. Section F, topsoil and vegetation removal, has been moved and seconded, and complies. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three, okay. Let's see. Erosion and sediment control. The following measures relating to conservation, erosion, and sediment control shall be included where applicable as part of all projects submitted for review and approval under this ordinance.
I really do recommend we don't read this because there's another fifty-six pages to go.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing.
When we do the criteria of approval, I actually have something to show you guys. Then I make a fast one.
I'm great.
Okay. I have written down that there's an erosion and sediment control plan provided.
Yes, I will make a motion that included in the proposal, creating erosion control plan 3.1 submitted with the application, and has been approved by Goral Palmer, a third-party engineer, and thus, Section G complies.
I'll second, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that Section G, erosion and sediment control, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Stormwater management. Uh.
H. I will make a motion.
Yep.
For Section H, finding a fact, that a stormwater management plan has been submitted with the application, and also has been approved by Goral Palmer, a third-party engineer, and thus, Section H stormwater management complies.
I'll second that. I couldn't have said it any better myself if I had to. It has been moved and seconded that Section H stormwater management has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. The next one is simple, that's borrow pits. And there are no borrow pits on this site.
So I'll make a motion that finding a fact, Section I, there are no borrow pits on the site, and therefore, Section I is now not applicable.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Section I, borrow pits, is not applicable. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Uh, let's see, site conditions.
I'll make a motion, finding a fact, that site conditions, as per the plan, will be monitored by the C E O during construction, and no change in elevation or contours are in the plan proposed. And thus, Section J complies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section J, site conditions, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Two, or three.
Three. Plumbing.
Make a motion, finding a fact, for Section K plumbing. Utilities plan shows the sewage disposal of the Sunday River facility, and no septic sewers will be included, and thus, Section K plumbing does.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that Section K plumbing complies. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Water supply. L, water supply, the planning board may allow the use of individual wells or private multi-user water systems.
I'll make a motion, Section L, finding a fact, that per the plan, new wells and connections are showed on the utilities plan, and a hydrogeologist review has been included, sorry. He was not bad at that. Therefore, Section L water supply complies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section L water supply has been met. Hydrogeologist. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Utilities. M, utilities, any utility installations in boat grounds should be located so as to have harmonious relation to neighboring properties and the site. Two, the size, type, and location of streetlights and underground utilities shall be shown in the final plan approved on the planning board.
I'll make a motion for Section M utilities, finding a fact, that the above-ground utility installations, which are transformers, shown on Plan 2.1, are between the buildings and the factory screen, and thus mostly hidden. And Utility Plan shows all the utilities, and shows the lighting, also shown, leave on Plan 2.1, and the lighting type is described with the downward-facing, non-intrusive approach.
LED fixtures.
Yes. And therefore, Section M utilities complies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section M utilities complies. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Sign standards. Sign shall comply with the county's various sign ordinance. This, plans that have been presented to us, show no signage at all. And Mr. Dunn, is there a reason there's no signage?
It's none proposed at this time. If the applicant wants a permanent sign, then they'll come back to the board under your sign ordinance.
Okay.
I thought it had some signage.
There's an existing sign that's slated for removal.
Is it a mistake sign?
No, I mean, but just.
So the question is. And sign standards, is it complies, or is it not applicable?
I think it's not, it complies because it's not that there couldn't be signs, it's just that they have done is not put up any signs that are, that are proposed.
So, for as a finding of fact, do we put down that no signage is proposed at this time?
Yep. It complies with the sign standards because the signs is permitted, my understanding of the plan. So I'll make a motion for the fact that sign standards complies.
Okay, it's been, oh, I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that, and sign standards complies. All those in favor?
Becky was asking.
Right, so you said I'll make a motion, but you didn't, so what's the motion?
That the Section M sign standards complies as a finding of fact, there are no signs at this time which is permitted under the ordinance, sign ordinance.
And if they wish to have a sign at some point in the future, then they'll come back to the board. So that was moved and seconded, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three, good. Uh, let's see, lighting standards.
So I'll make a motion, finding a fact, for Section L, the plan includes a lighting location and type, manufacturer specifications are included, and there are down-facing parking lot lighting, so beats the undue glare and minimized adverse impact on neighboring property standards, and thus, Section O lighting design standards complies.
Do you want to include anything about the lights on the building?
I thought that was, same stuff was included, right? Okay, well, add to that motion that finding a fact, the lighting standards on the building are also specified in these standards.
Okay.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that, oh, lighting standards has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
I have a cynical in my heart, so I think that's how it would work.
Uh, let's see, P. Dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, and explosive materials.
Make a motion, finding a fact, that these are residential buildings, and so, no dust, fumes, gases, odors, glare, explosive materials, and thus, Section P does not apply.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that P, dust, fumes, vapors, gases, odors, glare, and explosive materials, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, let's see. Section Q is easy, it's reserved, and it's blank. Section R, refuse disposal.
I'll make a motion, that's per the plan, finding a fact, construction refuse is handled as per the development plan, and the application specifies the use of private company solid waste dumpsters and hauling for buildings once constructed, and therefore, Section R refuse disposal complies.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that refuse disposal has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. S, protection of significant fisheries and wildlife habitat.
I'll make a motion, finding a fact for Section S, that the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife has confirmed there is no fish. has confirmed there is no fishery and wildlife impact on this lot. And therefore, Section S complies.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that S, Protection of Significant Fisheries and Wildlife Habitat, has been met. In the letter from Inland Fisheries and Wildlife. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Let's see. The Planning Board shall consider the existence of scenic loca- scenic site or view location as identified in the URA comprehensive plan, and the impact of the proposed development on such a site or view. The Planning Board may require the placement or visual qualities of structures on lots in such locations as to minimize negative impacts on the development of such sites and views. I think it's not applicable. It's not identified as a scenic site in the comprehensive plan.
Complies, right?
What, what?
Wouldn't it comply because it's... Okay, either way, I guess.
I agree.
You agree with?
It's not applicable.
It's not applicable. Okay, so T, Scenic Locations, is not applicable in this application. All those in favor?
Who's making a motion and seconding that? You can just make a motion. You're making a motion. He needs a second.
I'll make a motion that Section T, Scenic Location, does not apply.
Okay.
Somebody needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Let's start all over again. It's been moved and seconded that Section T, Scenic Locations, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Here we go. Architectural Sites.
I make a motion, finding a fact, that we had received a letter with a stamp from the State Historic Preservation Officer, that there is no impact to historic locations or archaeological sites. Therefore, Section U Archaeological Sites does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section U has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. There we go. Uh, Historic Locations.
Well, I got the same thing. I'm a little confused about it.
Well, I was confused about it.
But we do, so I'll make a motion for Section V, like seconded, with a stamp from the State Historic Preservation Officer, that there is no impact to historic locations. And therefore, Section V Historic Locations does not apply.
It also says here in the ordinance, that the Planning Board shall consider proposed subdivisions impact on historic buildings and sites as identified in the URA comprehensive plan. When a proposed development will include a historic building or site the applicant may design the development to minimize the impact on historic building or site. I almost want to say that this, this, this section is not applicable because it is the historic anything on that site.
Yeah, I made a motion for that fact.
Okay. Uh...
Second.
If they move and seconded that D, Historic Locations, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Section W, Agricultural Protection Buffer Strips. Uh, there are no agricultural, there's no agricultural activity near this site.
I'll make a motion for Section W, finding a fact, that no agricultural research is existing or proposed. And therefore, Section W does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that W, Agricultural Protection Buffer Strips, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Uh, Vehicle and Pedestrian Traffic.
I'll, I'll propose this, which is my interpretation, which is, make a motion for Section F, finding a fact that existing non-compliant entries will be maintained as a course of the future intersection, with no new entry of the road to be made. Access to the law is offered for less busy road at certain ordinance. And therefore, Section X complies. Containing the existing non-compliant entries.
Thoughts, David?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded that Section X, Vehicle and Pedestrian Traffic, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. W, I mean Y, Groundwater. The following standards shall be utilized by the Planning Board for reviewing development applications located on map, sand, and gravel aquifers. There is a letter from a certified geologist stating that this is not an in-sand and gravel aquifer. Um...
So I'll make a motion, that's for Section Y, finding a fact, the application includes soil statement and groundwater supply statement from Scott Dixon, certified geologist, asserting there are no issues with the groundwater in this application. And therefore, Section Y complies.
I'll second that. Oh, it has been moved and seconded that Section Y, Groundwater Protection, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Uh, let's see, Noise.
I make a motion for finding a fact for Z Noise. That these are residential buildings, so no expected noise issues once constructed, uh, once constructed. And the construction-based compliance will be enforced in the development plan by the CEO. And therefore, Section Z Noise complies.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Section Z Noise complies. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, let's see. Let's see the next one.
Buffers and screen.
Home Occupations. Um...
I think you skipped. Buffering and screen.
AA, buffers and screen.
Let me do a quick read. Uh, buffers. Hang on. Boy, noise is big. Here we go.
I will make a motion for finding a fact for Section AA, that the application chose buffers and screens along the edge of the lot to meet the various criteria of buffers and screen expenditures. And therefore, the application for Section AA complies.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section AA, Buffers and Screens Standards, applies and has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, Home Occupations. This came up in the last Planning Board meeting, and was discussed that, um... I might move that. Home occupations are not allowed under condo covenants. And so, I make a motion that Section AB Home Occupations has been met.
I'll second that.
Hmm?
I'll second that.
They moved and seconded that. Section AB Home Occupations has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Um, AC, Life Safety and Fire Suppression. There's a letter.
I'll make a motion that in the, in the application, there's a statement dated 214 that says that the units will have fire protection sprinklers in accordance with the NFPA 25 and 72 code requirements.
Okay, can we correct that?
Sorry.
So that should be per NFPA 13 standards?
Okay.
13R.
Particularly, yes. Um, but there should be something to that effect written in your amendment.
Yeah. All right, maybe I did. Okay.
Yeah. Got it. They corrected that. Okay, yeah, got it.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Yes, but I need to find it. Hold on. Oh, there we go. All right, I'll amend the motion that on the revision dated August 21st, um, fire protection for the project will be provided via sprinkler systems, which will be designated to meet NFPA 13R per the UGRA.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that Section AC, Life Safety and Fire Suppression, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, let's see. Commercial Wind Energy Facilities. This is not...
I will make a motion, finding a fact, for Section AD that there's no commercial wind energy, or new energy of the project. This Section AD does not apply.
I'll second that. Uh, it's been moved and seconded that Section AD, Commercial Wind Energy Facilities, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Mineral Extraction or Exploration does not apply to this project.
I make a motion, finding a fact, there is no mineral exploration involved in the project, and therefore, Section AD does not apply.
I will second that. It has been moved and seconded that Section AE, Mineral Exploration or Extraction, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Section AF, Wireless Telecommunication Facilities, does not apply to this project.
Uh, with one, one caveat. So I'll, I'll make a motion that finding a fact for Section AF, that while there is an existing non-conforming tower on the lot, that's part of the plan, that will be removed. And so, as part of the plan, there will end up being no wireless telecommunications towers. And thus, this project complies with Section AF.
I believe it's also part of the, um... Conditions of approval.
Yes.
I will second that.
You meant Conditions of Approval?
What was that?
You said it was part of the Conditions of Approval? We haven't done Conditions of Approval yet. We haven't gotten...
We talked about it at the last meeting. We didn't do anything formal yet. But we talked about we can add a Condition of Approval.
Right, yeah. So it's not, it's not a formal Condition of Approval yet because you didn't make motions on any, on any Conditions of Approval yet.
Frank, isn't it on the... Site Plan beside? No, it's not on that one.
Is, is what on the Site Plan be signed?
Is it right to the left of the signature block?
I think, Becky, this point is it hasn't been voted on. It hasn't been raised and voted on yet.
Okay.
Right. It's not in the minutes of being...
But I guess I would suggest that the plan shows the tower not being there, right? So it would be, if you're approving the plan, you're approving the absence of tower. If the tower was there, it would be a violation of what's being approved. Would that make it NA, or would that make it met?
You made the motion. I'll second it. It has been moved and seconded that the Section AF Wireless Telecommunications Facilities is not applicable to this application.
It's in compliance.
Yeah, it's in compliance.
It's in compliance, okay. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Solar Energy Systems.
I make a motion for Section AG Solar Energy. As there, uh, finding a fact, there are no solar energy systems included in this project, and therefore, AG does not apply.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that Section AG Solar Energy Systems does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Recreational Lodging Facilities.
Make a motion for finding a fact for Section AH that this subdivision does not meet the definition of recreational lodging facility, and therefore, this section does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Section AH, Recreational Lodging Facilities, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Okay, we have W, Performance Standards. And now we have to do... Check it there.
Some fun stuff for this. We'll see, we'll see if the purists will allow this.
Section Five, Criteria for Approval. An approving application submitted pursuant to this ordinance, the Planning Board shall consider the following criteria and file the proposed development. A, Pollution.
So if you let me hear. A, Pollution. The proposed development will not result in undue water or air pollution. In making this determination, it shall at least consider, one, the elevation of the land above sea level in its relation to the floodplains; two, the nature of soils and subsoils and their ability to adequately support waste disposal; three, the slope of the land and its effect on effluents; four, the availability of streams for disposal for effluents; and five, the applicable state and local health and water resource rules and regulations.
It might be as long as it's been picked up on the record, and this is your voice, it's fine.
I, I don't think it's any different than somebody having a laptop in front of them, and they're just reading what they've typed.
Right.
Yes, but I did try to be careful to get it right.
Mm-hmm.
And I did re-record when I screwed it up.
We're all following along anyway.
All right, very good.
Um...
So I didn't get the beginning of it. That started out as a motion?
Notes on this go as...
John's going to have a second. The secretary has a question. Yeah, so I didn't hear the beginning of it? Did that start out as a motion?
No, I'm just reading the section so that we, because when we do the criteria of approval, we normally read the whole section.
Yeah.
So rather than do it every time.
Right.
We have to record it once. Play it, and then we can go on to making motions. All the stuff with the application, without having to spend the brain power, voice power, reading it every time.
I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, my notes on A, Pollution. This property is at the approximate eight, nine hundred and fifty-foot altitude. The floodplain closest to this is approximately eight hundred feet in altitude. This property is not in the floodplain of the Sunday River. See map, Section 10.4 of the application. Uh, two. This site has off-site sewage disposal. See letter in Section 10.2. Three, slope of the land and its ef- effect on effluents. This site has, oops, no, there I went. The project has extensive plans for runoff control. Four, this project has, oops, there are no streams on this property. And I just left five blank. Thoughts, Rob?
Well, I guess we have to make a motion. So I'll make a motion that basically, what you said, I've written down more or less, the same elevation of the land is not in the floodplain. First, two, application specified the sewage connection to Sunday River, so waste disposal is not an issue. Three, since sewage is not being disposed via septic, no impact on the slope of the land. Four, no streams on the lot. And five, the application meets engineering criteria as attested by the engineers for health and water resource rules, and therefore, the criteria of, the criteria of approval is in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that A, pollution, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Erosion.
B, erosion. The proposed development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in land's capacity to hold water, so that a dangerous or unhealthy condition results. So I'll make a motion for finding a fact that the application erosion control plan is attested by engineers will not cause unreasonable soil erosion, and thus, B, erosion, is in compliance.
Can I add to that? There's a stormwater modeling plan for this project. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Additional finding a fact?
Finding a fact. It's been moved and seconded by nod of the head.
Yes.
B, erosion, huh? That's been met.
Erosion would be great. It's hard to go before.
All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. C, traffic.
C, traffic. The proposed development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of highways or public roads existing or proposed. If the proposed development requires driveways or entrances onto a state or state aid highway, Route two, Route twenty-six, and the Sunday River Road through the Skiway Road, the main Department of Transportation has provided documentation indicating that the driveways or entrances conform to Title twenty-three, section two, seven oh four, and any rules adopted under that section. If the proposed development requires driveways or entrances onto a town road, then how does a food, a driveway, or entrance confirm that it conforms to the town department required ways?
Thoughts, Rob?
Rob, I'll make a motion for finding a fact. At the, at the proposed level of approximately seventy trips per day, as specified, this will not cause unreasonable congestion. Also, that entrances onto Skiway Road and Tenderloin Road, while noncompliant due to less than three feet from junction, are existing currently, and thus, the application is not creating new noncompliant entrances. And thus, section C, traffic, is in compliance.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that C, traffic, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Sewer disposal.
D, sewage disposal. The proposed development will provide for adequate sewage waste disposal and will not cause unreasonable burden on municipal services if they are utilized. I make a motion for finding a fact for section D, that the application specifies sewage disposal via connection to existing Sunday River sewage system, and so will not impact municipal services, and so is in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that D, sewage disposal, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
E, municipal solid waste disposal. The proposed development will not cause an unreasonable burden to the town's ability to dispose of solid waste. Use of town services for the disposal of construction and demolition debris is not allowed, except under section thirteen R. I'll make a motion for finding a fact for section E, that the application specifies use of private dumpsters and contractors for solid waste disposal, and so not impacting town's solid waste disposal, and so in compliance.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that municipal solid waste disposal has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
F, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values. The proposed development will not have an undue adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat identified by the Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife of the town, or rare, irreplaceable natural areas, or any public rights with physical or visual access to the shoreline.
All I have is, is a letter from the main inland, main Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife stating no significant wildlife or inland fisheries habitats will be directly affected by this project. But this section, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, covers a lot more than that.
So I will make a motion for, uh, section F.
F.
Uh, that as specified in letters from the main Department of Fisheries and Wildlife will not have impact on wildlife habitat, as specified by a letter from the main Historic Preservation Committee will not have impact on historic sites, is not located on a shoreline, so no impact to physical, visual, visual shoreline access, and is in the resort district, so in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and so section F is in compliance.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that F, aesthetic, cultural, and natural values, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Financial and technical capacity.
G, financial and technical capacity. The applicant has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards of this ordinance. So I'll make a motion, although the second part of it, I may be a little unsure of, because of what the supportive part is, but my motion is finding a fact that as specified in letter from Franklin Bank, the applicant has financial capability, and given support from experienced firms for design and engineering, the applicant has technical capability, and so is in compliance.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that G, financial and technical capacity, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
So just as a comment, I don't know, too well, maybe you have some thoughts on this, just as a general matter, financial capability seems fairly straightforward. Financial institutions, back to you. Technical capacity seems a little, from my perspective, nebulous.
I would agree with that.
I mean, part of it is, we got mainland here in this particular applicant, so it's like, okay.
Yeah, mainland does a good job with, 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 yeah, this is what it's going to look like.
But, but do we, I don't, I mean, it's just a thing, but, uh, do we judge that if you don't have a big engineering firm as part of your application, it's not in compliance?
I would think that without an engineering firm, very small, that some of the technical aspects of what we ask for in the U D R O for a site plan or subdivision couldn't be met without an engineer.
Okay.
Right, I would think if someone, just some random layperson shows up and says, I'm going to build a hundred unit, whatever, and I did all the work myself, that might be a situation where you might say, well, I'm not so sure about the technical capacity here.
Right.
Well, part of it also is, I have a bias against saying you can only use known firms, right?
Sure.
And so it's sort of like.
But I think in my, in my hypothetical, and we may not need to get into this much further, that wouldn't necessarily mean you, you denied, it would just mean you'd have to press that person on, well, who, how do you, how do you have the capacity to do this?
Although, how, 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 how do I, as a board member, judge that? Which is always.
There might be tough, there might be tough calls, this one, I guess, is not one of those on that firm.
At any rate, we're good. We've, we've approved it, I was just interested in that concept.
So where do we stand on this?
In sufficient water. The proposed development has sufficient water available for its reasonably foreseeable needs. So I'll make a motion for finding a fact that the hydrogeologists provide an estimate of well yields for new wells specified as part of the plan, and thus, is in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that H, sufficient water, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. I.
I, public water supply. The proposed development will not cause unreasonable burden on existing water supply if wanted to be used.
I'll just note that there was a, there is no mission of a word in there here. For the first time, it said it should be burdened on an existing public water supply. It doesn't change the meaning of anything, but I'll just point that out for the record. It's, the ordinance says what it says, in any event.
As you could probably tell, this was the first time.
That was the first error, right?
So I'll make a motion for finding a fact that for section I, public water supply, as specified in the application, new private wells will be used, so no impact on public water supply, and so section I does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that I, public water supply, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Surface waters.
J, surface waters. Whenever situated entirely or partially within the watershed of any pond or lake, or within two hundred and fifty feet of any wetland, great pond or river, as defined in Title thirty-eight, Chapter three, Subchapter I, Article two, dash, V, one, the proposed development will not adversely affect the quality of that body of water, or unreasonably affect the shoreline of that body of water. So I'll make a motion for a finding a fact for J, surface waters, that since the development is not within two hundred feet of any defined body of water, there is no surface water impact, and thus, does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that J, surface waters, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Ground water.
K, groundwater. The proposed development will not alone or consumption of existing activities adversely affect the quality or quantity of groundwater. I'll make a motion for finding a fact on K, groundwater, that the hydrogeologists specify no unreasonable impact to groundwater, so section K is in compliance.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that K, groundwater, has been met. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. L.
L, flood areas. Based on the Federal Emergency Management Agency flood boundary and floodway maps, or the insurance rate maps, and information presented by the applicant, the development is in a flood flood area. If the development, or any part of it, is in such an area, the developer shall determine the one hundred year flood elevation and flood hazard boundaries within the development. The proposed development plan must include the provisional plan approval requiring that principal structures in the development will be destructed within their lower floor, including the basement of this one quarter of the one hundred year flood elevation. I'll make a motion for finding a fact that section L, flood areas, as delineated in the application, the development is not within defined flooding areas, and thus, section L, flood areas, does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that L, flood areas, does not apply.
Not apply.
Does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. M.
M, freshwater wetlands. All freshwater wetlands within the proposed development have been identified on any map submitted as part of the application, regardless of the size of these wetlands. Any mapping of freshwater wetlands can be done with the help of the local soil and water conservation district. I'll make a motion for section M, freshwater wetlands. As delineated in the application, no freshwater wetlands exist within the lot, and so M does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that M, freshwater wetlands, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. M.
M, river, stream, or brook. Any river, stream, or brook within or flooding the proposed development has been identified on any map submitted as part of the application. For purposes of this section, river, stream, or brook have the same meaning as in Title thirty-eight, Section four A D, subsection dot. I make a motion for section M for finding a fact, as delineated in the application, no river, stream, or brook exists within the lot, or the flooding lot, a flooding the lot, and therefore, section M does not apply.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that section M, river, stream, or brook, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Oh, stormwater.
Oh, stormwater. The proposed development will provide adequate stormwater management.
There are stormwater plants submitted in this application. They've been reviewed by our engineers and found to be sufficient.
I'll make a motion for finding a fact for section O, that the proposed stormwater management as delineated will be adequate as reviewed by a third-party engineering firm, and thus, that's for section O is in compliance.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that section O, stormwater, is in compliance. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. P, spaghetti lots.
P, spaghetti lots prohibited. If any lots in the proposed development have shore frontage on a river, stream, or brook, as these features are defined in Title thirty-eight, Section four A D, none of the lots created within the development have a lock depth so to shore frontage ratio greater than five to one. I E, to create a lot of thousand feet feet, the lots must have a minimum of two hundred feet of shore frontage, or a deeper lot that shore frontage will need to be greater. So I'll make a motion for finding a fact that section P, that no lots in the proposed development have shore frontage, as per the maps, and therefore, section P does not apply.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that section P, spaghetti lots prohibited, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Municipal services.
Q, municipal services. The proposed development will not place on reasonable burden on the town's municipal services, including but not limited to the new fire department or the local school system. I'll make a motion for finding a fact that the proposed development as specified will not place on reasonable burden on municipal services for fire, police, or school as specified in the plans, and so section Q is in compliance.
It is a letter headed town capital and operating expenses statement. This letter outlines that there will be no increase in municipal expenses nor services to section ten point four. This letter outlines that there will be no increase in municipal expenses nor services, see section ten point four.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that section Q, municipal services, applies and is in compliance. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. R.
R, lake phosphorus concentration. The long-term cumulative effects of the proposed development will not reasonably increase Howard Pond phosphorus concentration during construction phase and life of the proposed development.
I make a motion for finding a fact that section R, that the proposed development does not impact Howard Pond or surrounds due to its location, and thus does not apply.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that R, lake phosphorus concentration, does not apply to this project. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
S, impact on adjoining municipality. For any proposed development that crosses municipal boundaries, the proposed development will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing public roads and adjoining municipalities when part of the development is located.
So for section S, I'll make a motion for finding a fact that the proposed development does not impact any adjoining municipality as within, completely within the region, and does not border any other municipality, and so section S does not apply.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that section S, impact on adjoining municipality, does not apply. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
T, land subject to liquidation harvesting. Timber on the parcel being developed has not been harvested in violation of rules adopted pursuant to title twelve, section eight-eight-six-nine, subsection fourteen. If a violation of rules adopted by the landforests service to substantially eliminate liquidation harvesting has occurred, the planning board must determine prior to granting approval for the development, if five years have elapsed from the date the landowner and whose ownership the harvest occurs acquired the parcel.
Make a motion for finding a fact for section T, that as specified in the application, the land has not been harvested in the past five years, and so for section T is in compliance.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded that land subject to liquidation harvesting has been met and applies and is in compliance. How's that sound? All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
U, conformity with local ordinances and plans. The proposed development conforms with a fully adopted or subdivision regulation or ordinance, comprehensive plan, development plan, or land use plan, if any. You make this determination, the planning board interprets those ordinances and plans.
So I'll make a motion for finding a fact that this subdivision application is within the resort district, conforms to the plans, and since we've just done a full review of the U D R O, conforms with the U D R O, and so it applies and is in compliance.
Second. Can I have a comment?
Sure.
Can there be a, with nonconforming existing road entrances and driveways?
Sure, so let me amend the motion. That is in compliance with the U D R O with the exception of the existing nonconforming entrances, which will be maintained as is, and otherwise is in compliance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that U, conformity with local ordinances and plans, applies. M, is in compliance?
With the noted exception, yeah.
With the noted exception of the nonconforming drive entrances.
Entrances.
Not driveways, entrances. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. Take a breath.
That was fun.
What is that?
The speaker.
The speaker.
Stop moving the speaker.
Oh, so, okay.
I clipped it to my belt, I'm going for a walk, so I can listen to whatever.
Are you listening to the U D R O?
Are you listening to the U D R O?
That's a different, different app.
Oh.
Trained in nightmares.
It'd be running.
So, so this would be the point where if you guys have any, um, conditions of approval, you would discuss those and vote upon those before you actually approve the application.
Okay, so we have voted on each
Yes.
section of the criterias for approval. Now we need to vote on the entire section?
Entire?
No, no. No, conditions of approval.
No, no, we didn't.
Your criteria. If you have any conditions of approval that you want to place on this, you guys would discuss that and make a motion and vote upon a condition of approval. If you don't have any, that's fine. You would then either make a motion to approve the applications with whatever conditions that you've talked about, or make a motion to approve the application.
Yes, sir.
If it's helpful, there are some conditions of approval, and I think this is what you were getting to earlier, shown on the condominium plan, that have been adjusted for this plan but were created as part of the prior process. So, you can either read through those if it's helpful, or members can read it from, from the plan to see if any additional conditions maybe would, would be required, or if any of those don't apply.
What plan number is that, Rick?
That would be S two point one.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
Let's all vote in S two point one.
We should probably load each one.
Yeah.
Which is in this document?
Yes.
Someday I'll learn Trump's analogy, C two point nine.
S is just our convention for survey. C is civil, part of the civil set, civil process. That's it.
So I'll make a motion, which, or that reported down, the condition of approval. So, condition of approval number one, this approval is limited to the proposal as set forth in the application supporting documents, except as modified by specific conditions drafted by the planning board in approving this application. Any variation from the application or conditions of approval are subject to prior review and approval by the planning board. Failure to obtain prior approval for variations shall constitute a violation of the ordinance. And they'll think to include that condition of approval.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the first condition of approval. Is everybody picked up? All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
I'll make a motion for the second condition of approval. It's substantial start. Thirty percent of project based on, oh, no, thirty percent of project based on estimated cost of construction of the required improvements approved by this application must be completed within twenty-four months of issuance of planning board approval. If not, this permit shall lapse, and no activity shall occur unless and until the application is resubmitted and receives planning board approval.
You made that as a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. It has been moved and seconded that the second condition of approval
Is included.
There, right? All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
So, I'll make a motion that condition of approval three be required. All required improvements must be substantially complete within eighteen months of the start of the construction. If not, this permit shall lapse, and no further activities shall occur unless and until the application is resubmitted and receives planning board approval.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that condition of approval number three is
Included.
Included, yes, there we go. Sorry about that. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Yeah, I think number four probably don't need.
Number four, what?
I don't think number four applies for this. Because it's about phasing and subdivisions, and we're not phasing that at all.
Joel?
I'm reading.
Oh, okay.
I would suggest
I don't, I don't think that's a way, I don't think you can waive that condition. I think it has to be, they have to submit that. The money just stays in escrow. We don't use it, we don't use it.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that condition of approval number four, included, as follows. No later than five days prior to the start of construction of any phase of subdivider must send to the town a performance guarantee, as per the Unified Development Ordinance, section twenty-one. The contents of the performance guarantee must meet the standards of U D R O, section twenty-one dot B, and be accepted by the town prior to the issuance of the guarantee.
I'll second that. It has been moved and seconded that condition of approval number four is seconded. How's that sound? Okay. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
I'll make a motion that condition of approval number five is included as follows. Stormwater ponds shall be spaked out for review and approval by the expecting official prior to the construction of the lots.
Like that idea?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that condition of approval number five is approved, potentially, all those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
I guess the question is, is there anything more we want to move, move as conditions of approval?
Well, we discussed the cell phone tower, but we've been assured that it's not gonna be there.
Yeah.
It's not on the plan.
Yeah, it's a little bit of, they gotta do it for this, to follow the plan.
Okay.
So, I know we have to get super.
Well, I'm thinking that if we do not include that, we get to sign it tonight. Correct?
Correct.
And if we include that, they gotta go back and rewrite it, the next meeting.
True, although it's only a week out.
Nope. Ten days. Our ordinance says ten days for new subdental, so it'd be the fifteenth.
And prefer not to make a decision based on convenience, but the point is, I mean, it's not in the plan.
Right, right.
And it covered the whole lot, so it's not like
Kind of sort of no different than anything else that's not on the plan, because that's called a plan.
And we don't really care when they knock it down, it's just about, do the work, try to go.
I think one of the buildings is actually gonna go where the tower is.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm agnostic. Like, I'm fine without it. I'm fine if it's not good. I don't see a need for it. We did bring it up, we did talk about it. I mean, I guess if it really comes to somehow something weird goes on, it's not following the plan, so.
Sure.
Then, then I go to work.
Yeah.
That's a hundred percent accurate.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
I'll make a motion that we approve application twenty-five dash two-eight-six with the five conditions of approval.
I'll second that motion.
It has been proposed and seconded that we approve application twenty-five two-eight-six Timberland Timberline P H L L C. All those in favor?
Approve the conditions, right?
Yes.
Approve the conditions, yes.
One.
Two.
Three.
I didn't want to speak out of turn, but few, and thank you guys for your hard work and your clever tape recording. Yeah, thanks. All of, all of the above.
The question is, you hack that on your belt and turn it up loud to scare the bears away?
No.
No?
You know, if I'm out for a walk or something, or I'm in the woods, I'm just, I don't always, but you know, if I want to listen to music, I'll always listen to podcasts while walking.
So I have a wedding and robust version here, that's what the, um, the registry will need.
Okay.
So.
Please, the town does not need the robust one?
We do not.
Okay, do you need a copy?
We can sign one of the ones that he has off on easel.
Okay.
And keep that here for me.
Yeah, if you prefer, I can send a copy of that back, whichever is
We'll sign both of them tonight.
Yeah.
I'm gonna fold it and put it in file, so it doesn't need to be as clean, unwrinkled, as the registry requires.
Sure.
You have to leave it down.
Yeah. The small versions did, so I'm assuming the big version did.
I checked it out long enough.
But she's like, eat all that stuff in.
I think I recycle for it.
Right above each other then.
Two?
So you wanna sign?
Yes, you, you all sign.
I was at Trader Joe's the other day, and they had this bag of chocolate with maple sugar in it. It is to die for.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. It's just absolutely amazing.
Two, three, one, two, three, and that is virtual. I'll leave it right there. I'll take this one.
This is mine.
It's yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys again.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Everything?
We'll see you. Yeah.
You'll send us a copy of the, um, the, the final decision with the findings of fact and all that.
The findings of fact may not be ready October one for signing, but October fifteenth, yes, as soon as we get them.
Right, yeah.
I'll fold them electronically and then the hard copy will go to John.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks guys.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, let's pack this up.
Nice job being prepared, board. Nice job.
The what?
Nice job being prepared.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Maybe I won't have an ulcer after this.
Maybe your cold will go away.
Oh, wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah.
Oh. That was old business.
Yep, yep.
And for new business, we have none. And it says, number five is reports.
There's no reports.
No reports?
No reports.
Um, how many new houses do you get going up?
I haven't, I, I'd have to go a little tough, I don't know. I have forty-two permits out there, so they're not all for houses, but yeah, we've been visiting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, the pines?
Second building is going up.
Second building is going up.
Well, third building total, but second for the new phaser.
Okay. And that's part of their phasing plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Open discussion.
Well, I guess that was okay.
Yeah. It went well. I mean, it's not even eight, and we're done.
Well, the recording.
The recording, I like the recording. I really don't see that as any different than having someone with a laptop or prepared minutes in front of them and they're just reading them, so.
My feeling is that, that, I think it is different because it's, it's done easy, whereas if you're doing it in real time, you know, depending on concentration levels, you know, you can end up struggling.
Oh.
Did you turn? I did, thank you. I held them.
I swear, I just meant that I don't think there's any legal reason we can't use your recordings.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying about that, yeah. No, I think that's great.
Well, considering I've got a cold, I thought it was a wonderful idea.
You probably want somebody with a more stentorian voice to record that.
No.
No, that's, that was good.
We could always use A I.
Actually, I was, that was something I was looking at. The thing is, this is just so, I mean, this is like a free app.
Right.
It's basically just voice notes.
Yep.
It's like trivial, there was an M four eight format or something, it was like.
The town is looking at A I and, and some of their different trainings and things, so we'll, I, I don't think you'll be very far off that we see that in use.
Yeah, well, you don't even need A I, you just need to record it and then just have the recordings available and then.
Yeah.
And then, and this, this little speaker, like I said, this is.
Yeah, like ten bucks.
You can get it on Amazon for something silly.
Yeah.
Like I said, I just use it when I, when I walk, because it's light enough to just clip to something.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts for open discussion? How was your meeting?
Good, well attended. I had ten, I had twelve people.
Okay, you had two of them, show, three of them showed up here.
I had a, um, Resiliency Workshop meeting, to start working on the grant process for Sunday River Hazard Mitigation Grants.
Okay. Next on the agenda is schedule the next meeting. It says here, October first, there is not sufficient time for any new materials to be submitted, so anything new, thus planned or requests, will be revived. Revived?
Sure.
Reviewed. Previewed.
Reviewed, okay. Uh, October fifteenth, so is that saying that there will not be a meeting on October first?
No, there was a meeting on October first. I just wanted you to have that information in case you asked anything specific from the applicant to be submitted, it would have to wait until the fifteenth.
Like they would have had to change their plan.
But at this time, we have no new business.
We do have, we have an agenda for October first. I just didn't want to submit it out there in the public yet, until this meeting was over.
Okay, so there is.
There, there is an agenda for October one.
Okay. In that case, um, the next meeting is scheduled for October first, which is.
A week from tonight.
A week from today. Okay. Any other thoughts? Nope. We're off. Okay, and we will be back to our, to our regular board.
Yes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the September twenty-fourth meeting with the new replanning board.
I'll second.
It has been moved that we adjourn the September twenty-fourth meeting with a new replanning board. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. And we are adjourned.
Seven fifty-five.